This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home East Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 18th, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Five exits are to the right and left of the council chambers. Officer? Principal Lassiter? Could you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance?
I should. I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America, the two republics which stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Council President Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-hun?
Yeah.
Councilman Pistone?
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw?
Yeah.
Borough Administrator Ho-ger?
Here.
Okay, and now it's time for honors and presentation. And we have the retirement of Highland Park, long-term Highland Park, school educator and principal, Michael Lassiter. And I believe that Phil and I both had our kids that went under your tutelage. So I'm gonna ask Phil to read the proclamation, and then we'll present you something a little bit after that.
And I noticed that the honorary is smirking because yes, indeed, our boys were under your tutelage, and I probably say for both many, many a time. And therefore, whereas the borough of Highland Park is deeply indebted to and grateful for the leaders in our town who complete long terms of service and whose careers are characterized by dedication, integrity, and an inviting spirit of engagement with the public. And whereas the borough's gratitude is richer and deeper when a communal leader ending a long term of devoted service is retiring from a role in the Highland Park Public Schools in recognition of their unique influence on the lives, futures, hopes, and opportunities of thousands of students. And whereas the borough has greatly benefited from the extraordinary service of Michael Lassiter in our public schools, who first started as an eighth grade social studies teacher in 1994 and created a well-regarded global issues course that he taught for 12 years. And whereas Mr. Lassiter also served as the coach of the wrestling and track teams, as advisor of the middle school and high school student congresses, started the model United Nations clubs, wrote curricula, participated in the district committees, and was the Highland Park Education Association's vice president in charge of grievances. And whereas Michael Lassiter was appointed assistant principal of the Highland Park High School in 2006, a role he held for four years, assistant principal of Highland Park High School and Middle School, a role he held for two years, principal of the Highland Park Middle School, a role he held for two years, and principal of the Highland Park High School, a role that he has held for 10 years. And whereas Michael Lassiter's tenure as principal has resulted in a growth in stature of the high school, reflected in many statewide recognitions of the school and its faculty received from respected statewide organizations. And whereas Michael Lassiter announced his plans to retire at the end of the current school year in July 2024. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the borough of Highland Park hereby offer the borough's collective appreciation and adoration of Michael Lassiter for his exemplary service as an educational leader and principal, and our very best wishes for him to enjoy a long, healthy, happy, and prosperous retirement.
Phil, we can go down for a minute? Do a presentation. And I'm gonna present you with the keys of this season. So you're always welcome to return. You're not leaving. I'll just say the little short goodbye from the school.
Congratulations.
So we get our Borough Highland Park involved.
Thank you so much.
And now we're gonna move on to our mayor have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve the following minutes as distributed. May 21st, 2024, regular and executive session.
Second.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yeah.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-hun?
Yeah.
Councilman Pistone?
Yes.
And now we're gonna move on to council report. I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Kim Cho-hun.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephanie Kim Cho-hun, and I chair the Finance Committee. And real quick, had two items tonight regarding the rent control board. So they held their meeting last month, and they had their first hardship appeal. And they kind of debriefed at the meeting that I attended, and they're working on maybe some potential ordinance amendments. As you all recall, this is still a fairly new board that we kind of really got up and running last, about last year in this time. And they, at the meetings as well, there has been more public participation, and the members are having healthy discussions and getting work done. And as a reminder, the meetings are held every fourth Thursday of the month, 5:30 here in House and Chambers. Just be sure to check the Borough website for details. And as you may recall from the budget presentation with Borough Administrator Ho-ger, we needed to do a 10% water sewer rate increase to cover the increased cost of purchased water and Middlesex County utility are in charge. Tonight, we will be introducing the ordinance, followed by, I believe there'll be two additional, one additional here after that. And happy June 10th, come out and celebrate with us tomorrow. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Hale. I chair the Economic Development Committee. So I first wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out to our open house about downtown redevelopment a couple weeks ago. It was a packed cafeteria at the high school, and we had a lot of really, really great feedbacks, feedback conversations and questions overwhelming and positive from folks about our plans on Track C and opening up a pedestrian plaza on South Third. I really enjoyed talking to people who brought lots of really interesting, good ideas and thoughts about the next project. We're still collecting and collating all of the feedback that we got and have continued to get. So I wanted to say thank you to all my council colleagues for attending and helping to have those conversations with residents. And thank all the residents who came by as well. Still a long way to go. There'll be lots of hearings and meetings coming up. And this was a great kickoff to plan for revitalizing projects downtown. So thank you to everybody for that. Next up is a, there will be a local business mixer networking event on Thursday, June 27th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Soma Viu Garden at 73 Woodbridge Avenue. Your hosts are local business owners Sue Winkler and Bahartie Carla from Soma Viu Garden, and Christina Sharpe from Calico CPA. The mayor and I and other council members will be there, and also Representatives, Middlesex County's Office of Business Engagement. A lot of great opportunities to network with other businesses, life refreshments, wellness demonstrations, and even a prize. This is part of our MPP program and supported with that, but also put together by volunteers from the Woodbridge Avenue District. If you are interested, there's our flyers on the website. You can also RSVP to Harry Glazer, who's keeping track of that. Harry, you're keeping track of that? Glazer? So be a great event about the neighborhood, Woodbridge Avenue neighborhood. So just a quick report, we've got a lot of good progress on Super Fresh with their permits and their process. We are again looking at a Labor Day opening for Super Fresh. Been making some really good progress on getting all the approvals that they needed. And so again, we're looking at a Labor Day opening for Super Fresh, which would be fantastic for Highland Park. Tonight, you will see that we are introducing a sign ordinance. This has been a long time coming. The goal of this ordinance really is a resist, revisiting our existing ordinance, primarily to make it easier for businesses to understand and also to comply with, and along with some specific design changes. I wanted to thank Main Street Highland Park, the Design Committee, for their input into this. This would be a great way to sort of make sure that we're kind of all on the same page and some common sense rules about the looking field of downtown Highland Park, which is great. We said goodbye to Mr. Lassiter earlier. I just wanted to quickly note that Sergeant Ted Haas is retiring on Thursday, June 26th, and I just wanted to wish him a great luck in his retirement and future endeavors. My memories with Sergeant Haas go back over 20 years when I was a brand new member to Highland Park, and he instructed me on when it is possible to maybe left him, turn off rare to definite, and he did it with a very nice piece of great material. So I just wanted to thank you for that. Quite some time ago, but thanks to Sergeant Haas for that with Highland Park. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a quick but extremely heartfelt thank you to Mayor Elsie Foster. A few weeks ago, four Israeli hostages were rescued in Gaza, and they've been held in captivity for over 200 days. Word of the rescue came to America on Shabbat when many in our community do not watch TV or use electronics. And Mayor Foster took it upon herself to write a note informing people of the rescue and made sure that it was delivered to all the synagogues. There really are no words to describe how much that simple act, devoid of judgment or anger or politics, meant to the people in our community. I was at two different schools on Shabbat, and absolutely inundated people who wanted me to make sure to express my thanks and their thanks and their appreciation for letting us know that one of our sisters and three of our brothers made it home safe. It's a simple act of kindness, and unfortunately, there's a lack of those today. So thank you, Mayor Foster, for being kind in an often what feels like an unkind world. We really, really appreciate that simple gesture. So thank you very much.
It was the least I could do.
That's my report.
Councilmember George?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George, and I chair the Public Safety Committee. Just a reminder, Chair, we went towards June 10th flag raising. I apologize, Mayor. I have to sit in a special meeting of the planning board I represent who is hearing the canvas application. But June 10th, although we think of it, it sometimes scratch our head and say, what is it? And it's only been enacted for a few years. It's been celebrated in African-American community for over 100 years as one of the most important recognitions and celebrations of the end of slavery, despite 100 years of history and particularly challenging times for rights for everyone of all gender preferences and races. But with regard to the police department, our very heartfelt congratulations to Sergeant Haas on his pending retirements, as Councilman Hale noted, retiring after 34 years in Highland Park. I apologize, I didn't first get to meet him by getting a ticket. I first got to meet him by prosecuting tickets. And I didn't prosecute yours, man. As a resident prosecutor and council member, I've seen the care and concern for residents which marked his career and in my last 25 years or more, as well as his dedication to seeing justice administered lightly and mercifully. I can't send his retirement by saying we'll miss it, but we'll remember it with a smile, and that's the best gift and blessing we can give it. The Public Safety Committee interviewed officers last week. I know that my fellow council members will join me and say, it was a great interview section, some of the best candidates we have seen in many a year. It was a very difficult choice for recommendations. I hope by the next meeting, Matt and Chara and I with the mayor will be able to announce a candidate. They're going through the vetting process, so it is private at this time. But I think that we can look forward to some great candidates with young attitudes, some verbs, some fire for community policing, and some brave attitudes. With regard to the fire department, falls have been treated, especially last weekend, when the microburst wind events came in with these sudden rain squalls. I visited fire crews removing fallen trees at Harpkins South Second and toured at the North 10th tree wall, which blocked the roadway before it comes to come in. Fortunately, the inconvenience did not last long. We were able to ensure that there were no public safety issues while it was going on. We also have the PSENG crews to ensure that there were no wire safety issues. With regard to SWAC, last set of joint council members, Herschel Spelnick, along with Borough Administrator Ho-ger, and the consultants for our sidewalk plans. They presented the sidewalk and crossing upgrades, which are funded by federal grants from 2016 to 2018. And they think, why did we take so long to do it? The grants are federally administered through the state, and there's a process involved. I don't think we even got the grant in 2016 until after we applied for 2018. But the state has allowed us to combine the grants for the sidewalk project. The consultants group was a little technical, but they had all the sheets marked for the striping, the marking, the ADA access into corners, which is the primary lead in the project, primarily targeting the sites and triangles in near the schools. With regard to the library, most of the interior work is done. If you've had a chance to take a look inside the new light, layout, sorry, is immensely more open and user-friendly. There's a slight loss of shelf space, but the access, lighter feeling and easier browsing space and accessibility of shelves make it much easier to use the library. There are more computer carols, and they will have significantly better computer equipment and usability. The library has also just finished a conversion to the Polaris system, which is an upgraded software program for management of interlibrary, online lending, online ordering of hard copies and reserving. It's been implemented, everybody's been trained. This is a system being used across the county and in other counties' library systems. So it's well-established, the staff has been trained. In addition, you may notice when you go on to the library website that they'll be talking about the Stella Consortium. That's a new name for the former LNX library system, which is sponsored through the state and has multi-county access for internet and online lending. It's now called Stella. I don't know what the acronym stands for. We were trying to figure it out at the board meeting last night. But so if you see the name Stella on some of the lending sites, it is the same site that we have. It's being powered by the Polaris system, and it's up and running. And finally, the library room. Letting my report be without the library room. The newest contractors in place, the pre-installation meeting, I believe is this week moved from last week, and the executive director anticipates a good one and good scheduling because the summer hot months are also the most active months for roofers. But with good scheduling, we'll be attending a grand reopening. We'll have a competition between, I hope this competition happened, between the library and Super Fresh, all opening at the same time and moving in town. So I think that although we're still waiting for both to open, I think some great things will, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstone?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jason Spelnick. I chair the Recreation and Arts Committee. Within that committee's purview is the wonderful Department of Community Services, operate the community center, and the programs running out of there, including the one program that I just left, which was packed and filled with people having a great time, was this year's senior prom. It was, yeah, people were having a blast. So really, hats off to the one of the team at the community center for putting that together. And then the work of the community center, just a brief reminder that while we're counting down the days to Super Fresh opening up in town, if anyone is in need of transportation assistance to access other grocery stores, that is available through the community centers to stop and buy or give them a call and let them know if you need any help. Also, at the community center on June 25th, we'll have New Jersey Blood Services blood drive. It'll be from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. again at the community center. Free Mets t-shirts will be given away to people who donate to awesome artists. Then we'll also be really all the time looking forward to the fireworks in the park, which will be happening on Wednesday, July 3rd, at Donelson Park. It'll be from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Because they'll be start off with kids' activities, food vendors, and music. The fireworks beginning at 9:15. I don't even want to talk about it, but just in case there is a rainy day on Sunday, July 7th. Just putting that out there. Hopefully, don't need to worry about that. It'll be the same start time, the same place. And then lastly, tonight's report is, I just wanted to start talking about Parkstop. That is coming back. That is our annual summer outdoor concert series that will be kicking off next month. They will be from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday. It's located at Route 1 in Donelson Park. The very first concert will be Thursday, July 18th. It'll be featuring the Mike Launtray Band, which is a reconnoisseur band. Again, just saying it, there's a rainy day on Thursday, obviously, just in case. The second Parkstop concert will be July 25th, which will be featured Philly, which is a rock punk bluegrass band. And again, rainy day, it will either be on August 8th or August 22nd. The fingers crossed we'll be in that. After that, will be the last two Parkstop concerts, on Thursday, August 15th and Thursday, August 29th. That last one, which will also be our new end of summer celebration, which will have a number of other activities and features. So stay tuned for more details on that. And very important to me and many other like-minded folks out there, there will be select food vendors on site for all of the Parkstop concerts. And that, Mayor, is my report for tonight.
Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and nice to see so many people here. Just a few things. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee. So you may have noticed that Borough offices will be closed this Friday, June 21st, and the residents of June 10th. So that's going to affect your government, your site, and your payout. Tomorrow, June 19th, however, there still is, there's a pickup tomorrow, June 19th, Business District and South Side Garbage Collection. Thursdays, June 20th, South Side Recycling Collection. And then Friday, June 21st, the borough's closed. The Borough offices are closed. There will be no recycling or garbage collection. So my South Side neighbors, please bring out your garbage tonight because it's really hot. And that's actually another thing. It's not just you might have a overflow, but there are sanitation issues and other concerns, especially with this heat. Speaking of heat, a heat advisory remains in effect from Wednesday night for heating disease at 95 to 100 degrees during the afternoon and evening hours. It's really hot outside. And there's an excessive heat wash that remains in effect for Thursday through Sunday. Residents in need of shelter from the heat may take advantage of air conditioning at the community center at Borough Hall during business hours. And we're also grateful to the community, to our community partner, the Reformed Church of Highland Park, for making their quilt room available to residents during the evenings and weekends. The hours are as follows. Community Center in Borough Hall, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesdays, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This Friday, closed. However, the Reformed Church of Highland Park quilt room is open daily, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please, the prolonged nature of excessive heat can cause heat-related stress, particularly among at-risk populations. Those vulnerable include elderly children, those with pre-existing conditions, especially if they live near urban centers without air conditioning. And there will also be less weekly night going through the week as nighttime weather temperatures will also be increasing, especially for urban centers. And we were just talking about that heat, I know, is affecting, particularly more built-out environments where temperatures may be higher, which is why it's so important we plant a lot of trees. If you have questions, you can always call the clerk's office during business hours at 732-572-3400, or the not emergency line at the Highland Park Police Department at 732-572-3800. Only call 911 in the event of an emergency, but please check on your neighbors and friends and make sure that they're okay. Councilman George mentioned Safe Roots to School. Just wanted to thank all the residents who came out last night to the information center and see modifications planned for over 50 intersections in town. You can find out more, you can find the project's design and construction parameters on the borough's website at hpboro.com. If you go to the government tab at the top, there's a dropdown that says Safe Roots to School. Click on that, and you can learn all about the history of the grant, the 2016, 2018 grants that are funding this project, why it takes so long, and the extent of the project. Thank you to everyone who participated in Sustainable Highland Park's native plant giveaway this past weekend. Approximately 100 people signed up, and several tours of the Meadows Trail were given. These are the native plants that were given away, include Blue La Bellia, Sweet Chilled Pie, Purple Cone Flower, and Little Blue Senna. Stay tuned for Highland Park's, Sustainable Highland Park's next native plant giveaway and related programming with help from the Park Partners Grant. Sustainable Highland Park also collaborates with the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group for regular garbage cleanups. The next garbage cleanup trash pickup is Saturday, July 6th in the woods, along the woods and the sidewalk along River Road. This isn't a specific location, but it's the woods and the sidewalk along River Road, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Meet at the parking lot on River Road at the bottom of Harrison Avenue, which is in the Environmental and Education Center. Come to the next Sustainable Highland Park meeting, Wednesday, June 26th, 7:30. Learn more about all they do at sustainablehighlandpark.org. And I did just want to echo gratitude and appreciation for Sergeant Haas and Mr. Lassiter. And my son is a freshman in high school, so we got, you know, we got a taste of Mr. Lassiter's leadership, and he will be missed. So that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Borough Administrator Rick Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Terry Ho-ger, who is the administrator and economic development director, for those of you listening at home. I wanted to take a moment to also express my thanks for everybody who came out on June 5th to our meeting regarding the downtown redevelopment effort and Track C. I was able to update our website with the materials that were presented at the meeting. So if you weren't able to attend, you can find them there. You can also find printouts in the clerk's office, if that's your preference. And also a link to the video of the meeting presentation are there. You can also continue to send in your thoughts, questions, ideas to me at tjover at hpboro.com. My information's on the website as well. We're in the process, we got more than 70 comment cards at the meeting, and so we really appreciate the time people spent to fill those out and talk with us all evening. And so we're sorting through the comments and finding the themes, and that's going to influence our next phase of planning for the project. I also wanted to, a related note, mention with regard to South Third Ave. We, as was mentioned in the meeting, we got our NJDOT permit. Our goal list for tonight is payment for that permit. So as soon as I have that check, I'll be signing things and sending it to Trenton. But I did want to explain one thing that I got a number of questions. I think some members of the governing bodies got some questions. The permit is for the permanent creation of a plaza at South Third, and there are lots of conditions in that permit that will allow us to do so, not the least of which is Not the least of which is reconstruction of some of the traffic signals there. That will have to be fully engineered and bid out, um, as well as how we're going to close the road and update the signage, uh, to it. So I know we're all excited about getting going. I know there have been thoughts could be putting some temporary closures up and similar to what we did during the pandemic, but our current approval doesn't allow for that. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out there because I, I understand the enthusiasm, uh, but unfortunately, uh, that's not what we have approval for at this time. And what we're going to do is put our energy right now into, uh, hiring our design professional to help us do the landscape architecture and think through some logistics with Main Street about how this space needs to function in alignment with the spaces we have available on Track C. Um, and so, uh, that's kind of the major next step will be identifying that, that contractor and getting going on, on the meetings with regard to that. So, um, so it's all good, but there's a lot of work yet to come on that front. Um, and I also just wanted to mention, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman George and Hirsch, uh, the meeting last night regarding safe routes to school. The website will have the current plans uploaded tomorrow. I, I took a note of that last night as I intended to. Uh, and I would also mention, we have the printout plans, uh, at the clerk's office as well because they are kind of technical drawings. And if you're interested in a specific intersection, you're more than welcome to come in and look at a paper copy, they're on large, uh, sheets. Uh, so that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Laura, Attorney's Report.
Thank you. I have two items. Um, the first is I want to go into some basic rules about how the meeting runs. Um, we do see, we do see some new faces here. There may be some new faces that are joining us online. The meeting, as you can see, is run by the mayor and everything has to go through her. She also decides if someone else won't be speaking. So once the minutes start, we have two portions where members of the public can speak. The first part is about the resolutions we ordinances and the second part is called oral remarks, where individuals can comment on anything. Now, in both of those formats, we, we allow everybody to ask their questions or, you know, um, basically state whatever commentary they have. We close the public portion at that point. And then the mayor decides to answer because she believes that someone else can also answer them. She will defer to them. But at no time is there any public participation once the public portion is closed. And I want everyone to understand that because if I, unfortunately, if you hear from me, that means then we're going, we're going sideways. And the minute we start going sideways, it's not fair for the individuals that are speaking for them to feel like they're getting cut off because as you know, it's disrespectful. So that's the first thing. And I hope that once we get to the public portion, there will be times, you have a time limit and we will let you know. And then once your time is up, you gotta stop speaking. Thank you. The second item I want to just mention is Resolution Number 624174. Um, I would really, really be appreciative if we can pass this resolution today. Um, as you know, uh, for the last couple of months since I've during my tenure, and this has been going on, um, with a previous attorney too, there was a, an issue with special assessment from the Nelsus County Judge. And the amount of money that was pending, and I can publicly, uh, tell, tell you guys, it's about 165,000. We negotiated down to the original amount of 133,000. And I think that it is, um, it's in the best interest of the residents, so it's in the best interest of the governing body. And I know there has been a lot of protest over this, um, but we're, we've, we've taken it as, as far as we could without getting into litigation. I just feel that litigation would be a waste of everyone's time and resources. So, um, I'm hoping to have this passed and thank you for all of your time, county councilmembers and the mayor. Thank you.
Now, I have a, a very brief report. Well, I want to start off with first that tomorrow we are celebrating Juneteenth here at the Borough. And the first thing that's going to happen at 5 p.m. is going to be a kids program, which is led by the Highland Park Police Department and followed up by ice cream. And then after that will be the flag raising ceremony, uh, just behind here at Old Badet Community Center. So, anyone who's interested, please come out. And I just want to explain why is it that we're celebrating Juneteenth on June 19th? And then, uh, we're off on the 21st, which is Friday. Originally, Juneteenth is celebrated on the 19th. However, we did not, we were the first states to acknowledge and to put a date for the celebration of Juneteenth. Later on, when President Biden came into office, he made it a federal holiday. And so we need to catch up or the feds have one day and the state has another day to celebrate. So at some point it should come together and we are off at the same time. So if people are a little confused, that's why the confusion is there. But tomorrow promises to be a lovely afternoon. We'll have kids activities. And we will have activities for our flag raising and a little bit more information on what is Juneteenth and why it's held so near and dear to the hearts of African Americans. So come out, learn a little bit about this very important holiday that affects each and every one of us. Um, I was with Dr. Opoli two weeks ago and I provided, I presented her with a proclamation from Highland Park. And she explained that Juneteenth is not just a holiday for black folks or people of color. It's a holiday for us all to appreciate and respect each other. So tomorrow we'll share a little bit about that. So do come on out for Juneteenth tomorrow. That's started at 5 p.m. for kids and 6 p.m. for adults at the community center parking lot. Um, the quarterly, the Highland Park quarterly is out. So it should be hidden in the mailboxes and different places around town. So please take a minute and review what's in the quarterly and I think you'll find it packed with useful information. And then I am very proud that at League of Municipality, they, this cover of this month is called Celebrate. And Highland Park is prominently featured in here. And we are featured as a laboratory for leadership. 20-plus years Highland Park has successfully cultivated women in leadership. So please, if you get a moment, take a look and read about why we are this incubator or laboratory for leadership. Also, we all heard about Sergeant Haas retiring. And, um, after 34 years, he's saying goodbye to Highland Park. And I personally would like to say thank you. He is one of those persons that is very much an unsung hero and he prefers it that way. I remember a number of years ago, there was someone walking in the snow to Stop and Shop. And he pulled over and asked him what were the, and they said they had no food and they needed food. And he said he did not want this story to be told. But he personally put $200 in this person's pocket and then went back to Stop and Shop after he had finished shopping and gave them a ride home because there was food insecurity at that time and he wanted to make sure that everyone was safe. So Highland Park is saying goodbye to one of its unsung heroes and someone who goes above and beyond, not just keeping us safe, but keeping us secure when we face food insecurities. Last, last, we also, last month, no, this month, went to a meeting with the DOT to address the ongoing problem with the road improvement on Upper Raritan. Number of, um, Josh Pozanski as a community leader also was attending in that meeting. The commissioner for DOT and a huge swath of his staff was there. And they are some pieces that they're going to be working on right away. But the larger, the completion of the larger project is going to take a few years to all come together and for us to have a safer intersection. But they are pieces that they are going to be working on and doing some improvements over the summer. So we can have a safer pedestrian, hopefully safety area where we all can feel secure when we're passing, crossing the street and what have you. That is my report for tonight and I hope to see you all tomorrow. And with that said, now it's time for public discussion. 21 minutes total, three minutes per speaker on items on, on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attended via Zoom. So anyone wish to speak, please go to the microphone, it's over there, and announce yourself.
Hi, Josh Pozanski, 1411 West Avenue. I just wanted to ask before I make any comments, to say, I'm at the right public session. As I think it was mentioned during the reports, please speak about that now. But then that's the way it is for the second public session.
I'm sorry?
It's not on the agenda, but it was mentioned in the reports. Can I go back now? Yes, okay, good. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for, uh, uh, sending out those letters to the schools, uh, a week ago, the rescue of the hostages, just shows that now she said, now, being when bad things happen, which on October 7th, she alerted us all about that incident, that, that, that tragedy and calamity. But she also sent this when people were rescued and saved as well, a happy situation as well. And it went viral all over the world. People have seen what we posted on Facebook. It made support ads around the world. So I want to thank you probably for, uh, keeping us in mind when things happen when we don't have access to any newspapers or radio on the holiday on Saturday. I also want to thank you for inviting me to that meeting that you just mentioned at the DOT, uh, a few weeks ago. And, um, there was another accident, obviously on 27th just last week. And that same stretch of, uh, roadway, uh, I don't know if it, uh, I just want to bring it to your attention, to everyone's attention, that there was one sign we were discussing on South 11th at the corner of 27th. The intersection that says do not turn, question of children present, not children present. So I went back while this situation was happening last week, the accident, I noticed there's no sign there. So there must, there might have been a sign there. It was because they showed us a picture of the sign. So that sign doesn't exist anymore. So just let them know that the sign doesn't exist. I appreciate it. Also just, uh, echoing what everyone said about Sergeant Haas. So I remember a situation where he came to my house about 23 years ago, when my then five-year-old son, uh, bit his thermometer, we worked out the mercury poisoning in, uh, cold night on Monday. He showed up and he says, don't worry, he'll be fine. And thank God, 25 years later, he's still, 23 years later, he's still fine. So, okay, he is not only great, please, officer, visit your doctor as well. Thank you.
My name is Stuart Mitnick. I live at 353 Madison Avenue. And I just want to echo Josh's comments about your letter to the various synagogues in town. It was very much appreciated on all sides of the borough. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I love letting Northside go down. On the agenda, the first reading, number 24 dash 2086. You're talking about new on-street, uh, parking regulations for physically disadvantaged. Is there any chance that on Route 27 where it says no overnight parking, there might be parking for the accessible apartment in front of Anton's new building, the old international market, 137 Raritan Avenue? Or at least onsite, in front would be the easiest. Onsite would be helpful because we've got an apartment and no handicap parking. It was on the site plan. And the experts at Highland Park Planning Board insisted the developer remove the handicap parking and go 1,000 feet. So nothing has happened. This redevelopment is in limbo. I watched all winter my neighbors struggle through the cold weather on Denison Park on further down Northside. Another place. Please think about that. And when the clerk calls our 30 seconds are, are left and the final, uh, finish, could you please speak louder? Thank you.
Hi, Mary Bautia on Madison Avenue, uh, regarding the agenda items to give a license to the, uh, second of five marijuana stores that Highland Park is authorized for publicity. Again, just to get on the record, there are many of us who object to this and we hope you will know this evening. For those folks at home who are not aware, Highland Park has ordinance for six marijuana stores. Five of them, they have already given letters of support to and have authorized. One is already open. Uh, the second one is planned to open right next to Bubble Tea at South Third, next to the Heineken Bubble Tea.
Louder, please.
I'd like to also mention, uh, in the event that, uh, the owners of these marijuana stores are not aware that there is litigation currently in process against the council, uh, on this issue. And I haven't seen any notice in the agenda on the fact that we actually, uh, received three votes uh, in the appellate division from every judge that the lawsuit is to go forward. I have not seen that notice and I was just wondering why you did not list that in the agenda.
Mayor, uh, I'm not sure if you were here when I said about the meeting protocol. All the questions are going to be asked and we're going to close the public portion. And then we'll respond to the questions if we can.
I'm sorry, they'll be asked during what portion?
Okay, once we have the public portion, we're going to close it, okay? And then all the questions are going to be responded to if they can, or if they have to be followed up with at that point. So I understand, I get the impression that you're waiting for a response, but you're not going to get a response right now.
Oh, thank you.
So please, please finish whatever you need to do, the remaining time that you have. And then we'll hear from the next person. Thank you.
Okay, great. So if that question could be answered during this appropriate session. And then additionally, the second question would be, have you advised herbalicity and any other of the, uh, potential marijuana stores that this litigation is taking place? That would be the next question. And if so, when did you advise them? Thank you so much.
My name is Jill from 24276 Highland Park. I just have a quick question. You had mentioned some, you had mentioned something about the, uh, third, third, South Third having a plaza and a purpose and landscaping and whatnot. Do you know how long all this takes? That was my question.
Thank you, Jill. Hello, Kieran Crowley, 218 Harrison Avenue. Um, I have some questions relating to Mr. Hale and Miss Over's reports on, on Track C and also the Plaza. So, um, personally, I thought the designs were very impressive. Um, quite excited about the Track C project. Um, what I was disappointed, um, about was that there was no information on the financial side of the Track C redevelopment. So to me, it felt like I saw a brand-new car. I was sold. You know, look at this, it'll be great. Drive it, you'll love it. But I didn't see the price. So, um, you know, I understand negotiations have to sometimes be kept, um, under attorney-client privilege. Um, but we've had this conditional developer now for almost two years, so August 2022. So, um, I would really urge you to share some details as it relates to the financial side. And I guess to be more specific, have any tax abatements such as pilot schemes been requested by the developer? I know nothing's agreed yet, but has it been requested? Is it, is it on the table? And secondly, um, I guess if, if it is out there, for example, in a term sheet or something, um, could you share high level what the parameters are, um, of what they're asking for? I know there are no, no done deals yet, but at least, um, please share roughly what the financial side is going to be. Secondly, now relating, uh, to the, the South Third, or call it Plaza, public space. I was surprised that it really does seem a decoupled project from Track C as it relates to the status and the approval process. So, um, am I correct in that understanding that the Track C, sorry, the, the South Third Plaza will have to go through its own planning board, um, agreements for it to become a reality? And I guess I'm probably expressing the previous member of the public in, in a longer way because I'm, I'm concerned that if they're decoupled, um, there's less pressure to make sure that the Plaza happens. And it was said, the elephant in the room with the public is having a farmers' market space in the public space. You know, if that really lags the Track C development, that's a big, a big disappointment. And the last thing I guess is a question, um, have you made anything conditional on the approval of garden homes going, going, going ahead? Making something about the Plaza conditional to that, to signing that contract? Making something about the Plaza conditional to that, to signing that contract? Thank you.
No, Mayor, there are no members of the public on Zoom with their hand, oh, I stand corrected. I do see one member of the public with their hand up. Marcia Schiffman, you can just say your name and your address for us. May you unmute yourself?
Yes, uh good evening. Um my name is Marcia. I am a member of the street ward and a co-chair of the design committee. I live on 13116th Avenue. Um I just wanted to comment about the ordinance number 24 dash 2087, the signage ordinance. Because um it was really a long project, and we're very happy with the results. Members of the design committee, and I do thank Councilman Hale for mentioning us, um worked many, many hours with Chris Pans and reviewing the ordinance. And we went through multiple and I will say your partner is really very responsive. And the final project, I think, is a good one. That will help the borough, help businesses, and be understanding, or be more understandable. The last ordinance was written, I don't know, 20 years ago by a member of our design committee as well. I, I do want to thank by name John Webster from the design committee, Jim Nichols, and Debbie Rainwater from the design committee, who worked myself, with myself and Chris Costanza. We're happy about it. Did have a couple of comments. One is, I think the idea of having the process to have exempt signs really help businesses because it will speed up businesses' sign review process. And that was very creative on your planners' part. Um also, I think the table worked very well this, this iteration. Um I did have one suggestion for future work. It was something that could not be a key, a sign ordinance. We really felt that it, that the borough should be able to control or regulate, and that's looking at murals and outdoor artwork and finding a to and, and many towns do do that. So it's something that should be put on the, the next, the next work, next work. Thank you very much.
Um here, that looks like our last handle from those at home. Um I will also mention there are five people joining that way. Oh, I gotta hand you. This, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, this will have to be our last one before we start. Matt Feldman, if you could please say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Terry. It's actually Diane. I'm that's from Diane Feldman, North Fourth Avenue. I showed up late to the meeting, but I just had a question. That's something that was being discussed um about some business um meeting having to do with Woodbridge Avenue development. Um can I ask, first of all, did I hear that properly? And can I ask where it is be, being held?
Diane, we're going to take questions when we close public comment, but we took a note of that, and the mayor may call on one of us to answer your question.
My, my specific question is, I would like to know if wherever it's being held is an accessible location?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Based on our time, I think we're
We've done our 21 minutes. Okay, see, um may I have a motion to close public participation?
Motion, second.
Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
We're gonna go through it then. Maybe Terry can answer. I know the litigation, we can't comment on any kind of litigation, so.
I would defer to
Our, our borough attorney on the litigation for
Yes, you're correct, Mayor. Uh we cannot accommodate any penalty litigation, but thank you so much for the cause.
Uh Terry, would you want to talk about South Third, the plaza?
Sure.
And the, the pilot and stuff like that?
And I, I did tick notes. Uh I'm always happy to talk, I believe, Kieran, ask these questions. And Jill?
Yes.
So uh how soon will it take? I don't have an exact date, but we do need to bring in a designer. Um we share your concern. I'm gonna kind of take both questions together. Um our, our very, very strong goal is to have our plaza and our space ready to go in advance of construction on the site. Do I have that in an agreement yet? No, we're, we're trying to figure out the timeline, but that's strongly what we uh because it will make the, the more seamless transition for the farmers' market and for all of our supporting. One thing we are doing is, we aren't necessarily, I wouldn't characterize it as decoupling. I would say we are trying to design complimentary projects because through our negotiations with Garden Homes, we have a lot more community space in the building than we had necessarily anticipated when we started our negotiations. So now we're trying to bring our plans for South Third together with the, the space that we're negotiating with Garden Homes. So um I think we'll actually be bringing them together. I look at it very differently. And I share your concerns. I know the council shares the concerns about the timing and the phasing. And we're going to do our best to make this as smooth a transition, and nobody, after we fought this hard to get to this point, are we giving up on that plaza. Uh we also have a lot of irons in the fire for funding that initiative, both design and construction, and we're pursuing that really hard. Um but you know, I'm going to be pushing hard to get that design underway so that potentially we could be ready to go into construction before Garden Homes. So there will be more. And Mayor, may I, may I address the other questions related? Uh with regard to financial negotiations, you're correct, we're not in a position to share where we are with that, but there will be a financial agreement. Those terms will be made public prior to any council decision on those. We have the opportunity to inspect those once we get a little further down the line. But what I will share with you is, the day after the meeting, I got an email from Joe Baumann saying, we gotta get this financial agreement nailed down and keep things moving. So we share your concern. We want to get to the point, just like we got to the point on the design to be able to share. I don't think we're too far off being able to get to the level of detail with the financials, but we just can't shore in with, with the developer either until we know kind of the suite of things we're asking for. So uh I hear you, and we will share as soon as we can.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Hale, would you like to address Diane's question about Woodbridge Avenue mixer?
Sure. The address is 73 Woodbridge Avenue. Um uh I believe that it is accessible, but we certainly make sure that it is, to clarify that, and I can come and talk to you about that. Um I know that they have a variety of classes at 73 Woodbridge Avenue. Um uh so I, I believe that it is accessible. It's a pretty new building.
Thank you. Taking a few notes. Ordinance required a second reading. Clark, can you please report on ordinance number 24 dash 2085?
An ordinance to amend chapter 230, article 20 of the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, concerning stormwater management, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication on file.
Public hearing? Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come up to the microphone and give your name and address, or if you're on Zoom, please put the raise hand button.
Mayor, no hands up at home.
Seeing, seeing no one, may I have a motion to close public session of this hearing? Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24 dash 2085?
Motion, second.
Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
Ordinance required first reading. Clark, can you please report on the introduction of ordinance number 24 dash 2086?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residents occupied by persons with a physical disability and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010
I hear you.
has been duly introduced by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion, second.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve? Uh Clark, can you please report on introduction of ordinance number 24 dash 2087?
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, Moesix County, New Jersey, amending chapter 230 land development concerning signage regulations and other design standards has been duly introduced by the Economic Development Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to approve or reject ordinance number 24 dash 2087? Authorized publication as required by law and set public hearing for July 16, 2024?
Motion, second.
Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
Clark, please report on introduction of ordinance number 24 dash 2088.
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, chapter 138, sewer and water, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24 dash 2088? Authorized publication as required by law and set public hearing for July 16, 2024?
Motion, second.
Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
Now we move to the consent agenda resolutions. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items? Eight, 13A through 13Q?
Move, second.
Rock, roll.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
There's no appointments tonight, so we're going to move right into the second public participation. Three minutes per, per speaker on any topic, subject to conclude by 9:00 PM. Comments from the members of publicly attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom. Please announce yourself, name and address.
I have, I have a couple of things. One is about the, um, the police in the town. And two, when the, um, the police is called, they don't show up. Why is that?
In fact, we'll answer questions later. So if you have any other comments, you can make it now. Thank you.
Michael, we're in 207 South Sixth Avenue. I came also tonight to express my appreciation to Mayor. Um as one of you said, it's good to see you in good news. And we'd much appreciate it, and as Josh presented, you said your, your notice of it, it's been over my son in digital, so he saw on a couple of WhatsApp and Facebook groups. It was misidentified at one point as Highland Town, New Jersey, but I saw that was corrected. But we do appreciate that, Mayor. Um also, we appreciate all the council members who have come to different events. We've had shown support for the Jewish community these last eight months, and it doesn't go unseen, it's very appreciated, and I do thank you. And also, like, to thank the Highland Park Police Department for always being there for us at our synagogue. But also, um, things happen over past over at Rutgers, and we were quite concerned. And I addressed it, and the police department took action right away, and really is there for us. We appreciate all the support that we can. Thank you very much again, Mayor.
Um I am a member of the Board of Health in Highland Park. And I don't know if you all are aware, unfortunately, I guess Councilman Ketterer is not here to give a report, but in our last meeting, um, we had people join who didn't turn their cameras on, and then suddenly during the meeting, turned their cameras on and Zoom bombed us with either porn, like sex, graphic images. Um and unfortunately, there was also 10th grade students in the room who are Board of Health representatives. Um so that was really distressing. And then the most distressing part, though, was that our Board of Health chairperson doesn't have Zoom controls. There's no way to like turn the camera off, or there's no host for the meeting. And it, it's happened before in other meetings. It's happened in a public access meeting. It's happened in a human relations commission meeting. And it just seems like there are some really basic Zoom protocol and things that should be put in place. And so I'm wondering if, I know the police have been looking into this, and I really appreciate that, and I'm glad that it's being taken seriously. But I'm wondering if you can address what the plans are moving forward for Zoom meetings and how that's going to be handled? Thank you.
Highland Brand Rice, Strand Avenue. Um I should say to you, Mayor, it's been brutal, almost nine months. Um you know, I've been a staff observer, observer to you my whole life, and it's been really hard to disconnect for 25 hours each week. Um and it's so meaningful to know that you're thinking about us, and they are just here to do this and.
Give me the other one. My name is Sal Agusta. I live at 75 Forest Street, Madison. When I was a teenager in, uh, in the city, it was always illegal to smoke pot. Very bad. I never smoked pot. It damages the brain. Now these vape shops are opening up. I have a stepson, 16 years old, who's been going into his vape shop with his friends, Ed influences, and they're buying pot. No one's checking their ID for their age or their name, or where they live for that matter. Now, he's been in trouble twice at the high school, and I think it's time that the police or someone investigate these shops, check them for what they're doing, just to protect the kids. I don't see that as being a difficult task. Does anyone see that as being difficult?
Sir?
What matters?
Sir, point of order.
Yes.
We just need individuals to ask their questions and their comments, and then we're going to close public portion. And at that point, if there's any handy questions that need to be responded to, they will be. I understand, I don't know if you're asking a rhetorical question or as part of what you're presenting. I just want to let you know that you can finish up your comments and let the next speaker speak.
I'm just one of the voice for my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Sir, I'm in the front row. I understand that you are saying something. I can't hear it. But there's only, only individuals that are speaking right now that are at the mic. If there's anything additional that you'd like to ask, or you can always come up, and then we will, once everyone is, is done, because I understand you just spoke. But please do not be disrespectful to anybody on the governing board or who is speaking right now. Thank you.
Hi, Lois North Second Avenue. Okay, I didn't hear an answer for the status of accessible parking for the tenant at 137 Raritan Avenue, end up across from the Sunoco, but over a little bit closer to Brunswick. Fair Housing says that's a violation. Federal Fair Housing has to be nearby. You can't put them 1,000 feet. Federal Fair Housing has to be nearby, you can't put them a thousand feet, you can't ignore them. And I know it's still a bit proper in a sort of gun shop, the old gun shop, but something is going to be worked out. What is the public, the policy of the borough? When paid cash to purchase a few documents, will my 25 cent coin be turned, forced to be turned down? And I'll be threatened with ceiling for 15 cent purchase, keep the change? That's a question. What's the magic password? I faxed a number of items here to Borough Hall this year. Two never arrived. One was the request for the safety report on South Third, my second request disappeared. First one was never done. Third one says it's non-existent. Safety request for the people on the north side, the new Hebrew Grove School. Where, how are the police going to get there? Can't we have a substation? My second request that I, item that I faxed, when I heard that the first one didn't come through, I asked him, the tax assessor, if you received my thank you note. He never received it, I brought him the original. Also, I wonder who, a few years ago, instructed the former attorney, Ed, from Princeton a few years back, to destroy or lose or get rid of all the Commission for Universal Access, the previous commission minutes, and it started out in 1990 with the Compliance Committee. The minutes, the description of hearings from this year for the Commission for Universal Access says, amended by ordinance 1626, after a written decision, 30 days after it is completed, a record of the action taken on each request or complaint must be maintained as part of the records of minutes. At each level of legal process, a commission has to have minutes. In the description of the Commission for Universal Access, it also talks about a secretary. They used to have a page secretary.
Page secretary.
I'm sure there's budget cuts, there's got to be someplace else. So was there a vote? If I can find that, given the month and the year, who, what genius, so did these have to be destroyed? Thanks.
You want to say?
Yeah, Mayor.
Seeing there's no further public comment, may I have a motion to close public participation?
Motion, second.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilman Pustonik?
Yes.
Terry, could you address the Board of Health question? I know we discussed it today, so can you just provide the steps that we're putting in place to, not just that board, but so people will not be Zoom bombed anymore?
I'll try not to get too in the weeds on Zoom controls. But we do use Borough Zoom accounts for our boarding commission members. However, we use shared accounts, which are registered to Borough emails. Myself, Monica Jackson are names that those of you who log into those meetings, you'll recognize. Zoom requires two-factor authentication, so when we try to share that login with Board of Commission members, and they log in at 7:00 PM, I lost track of where Tracy's sitting, sorry. There, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to address them. That, what happens is, you try to log in, and then I'm not there, or Monica's not there to say yes, and so we can't do it. So we're revisiting it, and actually, we are going to be moving to Google Meet, because it will allow us to have co-hosts. We're going to actually set up dedicated emails for each boarding commission that they can use. Monica's going to, basically, I have a draft of an email that's going to be going out to all Boards and Commission members. I was going to invite the Board of Health to be our guinea pig, since you had the most recent issues, and we really do apologize, and I know that was really upsetting. But unfortunately, if you're not a registered Zoom user with the paid accounts we have, we can't make, even if you have your own Zoom account, I can't make you a co-host, which gives you the authority to boot somebody up. So, so we're taking it really seriously. We have to just get those new email addresses created so that we can establish those meetings. And then we think it's a matter of days, you know, or potentially a week. I just don't know how quickly those, we have to go through a third party to set up our Gmail accounts. So, so that's the plan, and hopefully that sounds like something you know how to do, so that when it comes to your meeting, you guys will be in really good shape. We figured people are pretty familiar with the Gmail platform, so it actually might be easier for everybody in the long run. So you'll be getting an email probably before the end of the week from our. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Radcliffe raised some concerns about noise ordinance and public safety issues. I'm going to ask Councilmember George to follow up and look into that.
Thank you, Mayor, we will list that for the next public safety meeting. In the meantime, I'll discuss that with Captain Grappello and Tim, so.
Council President want to add his comments on Zoom as well?
Thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Tracy, for coming. I did just want to echo what, you know, what Terry said, you know, this is being taken really seriously. That night, Jay Cross and the former chair of the Board of Health reached out. Then I spoke with Sarah Kelly, the new chair of the Board of Health. We are mortified that that happened. There is nothing better than having kids, you know, attend municipal board and commission meetings. For my kid, who I encourage to go to municipal board and commission meetings, if this happened, it'd be very, very upsetting. So we really deeply apologize for taking it incredibly seriously. The police are investigating because of the reminders involved, you know, it's doubly important. But please stay vigilant, and thank you for raising up, and hopefully, we've safeguarded, it won't happen again.
And we're not just doing it for the Board of Health, it will be for all Boards and Commission, because we want to keep everyone safe when they're attending meetings and doing their civic duties. So all Boards and Commission will have the same protocols in place. Hello, I was mentioning a bunch of issues with parking. I'm going to turn that over to Councilmember George, that's public safety. And I think Terry can look into the whole fax, why fax numbers are not going through, and what's going on with fax lines. And Matt will also look into safe routes to school, to the schools for the girl's schools. And Sal mentioned, from Edison mentioned about pot shop, it's an ongoing litigation, so we can't comment on ongoing litigation, and so we will not be making any comments there.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may address the handicap parking issue on Raritan over the new development next to the.
Microphone, please, microphone.
Thank you. With regard to the handicap parking spot in front of the new five-unit development, it's a really wonderful new restaurant and coffee shop, is, I frequent a lot as well. It's on Raritan Avenue, the handicap spot can't be authorized by Highland Park, it has to be authorized by DOT, however the enforcement of it, and the putting in place of the, of any parking requirements should be brought to intention of administration through this area and the zoning office. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we, may? We're going to move into executive session, and it's item number 17, executive session, potential litigation, block number 2001, blocks 6, 7, 9, 10, 46, and 48, redevelopment negotiations on track A. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Rock on.
Rock on. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council, Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilman Pustonik?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn regular meeting and go into executive session? We will not be returning after executive session, wish everyone safe and cool evening. And we, thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Next meeting, July 16, 7:00 PM. Thanks for coming.